President.
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 Vice President.
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 Thank you. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Legions. Thank you. Councilors, can I please get a motion to approve the City Council minutes from February 6th, 2018?
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second. Are there any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Councilors, moving on, public participation. Please note that you will have two and a half minutes to speak. When you hear the first bell, that means that you've spoken for two minutes. When you hear the second bell, that means that your time is up. Please state your name and address for the record. Please address the City Council as a whole and not any individual City Councilor. First person is Ms. Michelle Paletta.
Good evening and ladies, Ms. Michelle Paletta, 198 Essex Street, apartment 101 in this great city. I have been here, I don't know how many times, about the same thing, parking on Essex and Jackson Street. It's been about six months, it's been tabled twice, it was took, taken off the table, and never put back on again. Now, the problem is, we have one handicap parking on Essex, because in front of that, it's just a regular parking place. On Jackson, we have the Housing Department parks on Jackson. If you come in with a van for someone to get into, usually they can't get close enough unless you go out into the sidewalk, into the, uh, what do you call, um, crosswalk or in the street. A lot of times, it's had to be that to get in the back of the van, the housing pops there. There was a yellow line there, I asked them about it, and they said, "Oh, we've put it down because the police said you could." And I'm going, "I don't think so." I went to the police station, they said, "No, we don't do that." The line's still there, they're still parking there. We have a lot of handicap people on the corner of Jackson and Essex, there's 71 units, some have two people if they're married, there's a lot more people. And if the vans and the taxis, the transport people can't get in there, they're out of luck if there's other people parking there, like the housing. And I have gone through this and explained it, I don't know how many times, and I can't understand why it has not been taken care of. I even spoke to our District Councilwoman, Sal Reyes, and she said that she would help and that she'd work on it, and I haven't seen anything happen with her either.
Please remember to address the Council as a whole, not any individual councilors.
I'm at the end of my rope, as are a lot of other residents, I don't know what I had to do to get the Council to approve this, or what are the information they need. So I would appreciate it if somebody would tell me. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Next person is Mr. H. Malley.
Good evening, honorable members. Remember your campaign promise, save Lawrence, prosper Lawrence. Only possible that you, as our elected official and Mayor Rivera, support our Police Department and Senior Officers Union. Our Police Department under impeccable leadership of Chief Roy Vask has done excellent job to protect our citizen. Now Mayor Rivera need to sign our Police Officers Contract. Our city is a better city because of our hard-working DPW workers. We need to support the union. Our public school under impeccable leadership of Honorable Commissioner Raleigh now is one of the best public schools in the nation. We are grateful to Honorable Commissioner Raleigh, the hero that rescued our public school. Now Lawrence Public School, more Level 1 school with more high school graduate. Now we need to support Lawrence Teachers Union. Every citizen of the city need to wear their spin in support of our teachers and union. The great leadership such as Frank McLaughlin is the voice of our teachers' union. Work hard to get contract for our teachers. Support Lawrence Teachers Union, which they must know 80,000 citizens are behind them. Police Department with a budget of only $12 million has done impossible task of safety. We demand that this Council and Mayor Rivera show appreciation and sign their contract. Work hard in your terms of in the office to support our firefighters. We, the people, demand of you to support our teachers and the union and work hard to get contract for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Next person, Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors, my name's Dick Russell, I reside 34 Cross Street. I have several issues to bring to your attention. First, the appearance of new, of new snow parking ban signs. Isn't it a little bit late into the snow season to be posting these signs? I mean, 64 days into the 102-day asinine parking ban season. What will someone do, what will you do if someone succeeds in getting the snow parking ban chain ordinance modified? Is that because something similar to other cities, or is this just a money-making venture? Next, million bucks to pave basketball courts. You couldn't invest any money in programs to keep kids out of the illegal courts. Hopefully, when you repave the courts, you won't use paving material left over from the previous administration. If you do use old paving material, you could end up having an extreme basketball tournament, like dribbling around potholes. Finally, I have to open my mouth about 55 Lowell Street. A guy buys a lot for 150 grand seven years ago, he spends another 50 grand in taxes over the next seven years, and he's willing to go with the lower of the two appraisal prices. That's roughly a $475,000 more than he invested in it. Big question I have is, why is there such a disparity in the appraised value of $675 or $700,000 and the assessed value of $160,800 by the Assessors Department? I have a great idea. Why don't we take the lot by eminent domain and let the owner take us to court if he thinks the city is screwing him out of any money? I'm willing to bet the threat of going to court to get a decent price must save, might save the city about 200,000 bucks, but I forget, the money's coming out of free cash, isn't it? As an aside to the lot at 55 Lowell Street, the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority sold that lot in 1963 for $30,000. One last thought, how can the Council allow the city to waste money needlessly while ignoring the homeless, the drug-addicted, and lastly, the veterans? It truly escapes me. I add that it is funny, you can find money to put up winter parking ban signs while ignoring signs commemorating veterans throughout the city that are in dire need of replacement. I guess making money is more important than remembering those that have defended with their lives your right to make terrible decisions. Remember who brung you to the dance. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next person, Emilio King. Any man address for the record, please?
Ida Lys Vasquez.
Emilio King. Nosotros somos de la buena, buenas tardes. Dios le bendiga. Nosotros somos de la Iglesia de Dios de la Profecía.
Good evening, we are from Church of God of Prophecy.
De la, del 54 de la East Haybrook.
54 East Haybrook.
Y nos gustaría hacer una oración por cada uno de ustedes.
And we would like to do a prayer for each and every one of you guys here.
Por su familia.
For your families.
Y trabajos.
Your work.
Y qué mejor oportunidad que hacer una, una oración por la ciudad de Lawrence.
And what a good opportunity to make a prayer for our city of Lawrence.
Con las personas que toman las grandes decisiones que pasa en esta ciudad.
With our people that make the biggest decision in our city. Amen. Um, I, I ask for everybody to rise in this moment, please. Lord Jesus, we come before you, God. Thank you, Lord God, for this moment, we pray, Lord God, for our City Council. We give you thanks, oh God, for this opportunity. We pray, Lord God, that it may be you in this place, Lord, and we pray, Lord God, for each and every family of the people that are here. And I pray, Lord God, that you may be the center of our city, that it may be you protecting our city, Lord Jesus. We give you thanks, oh God, for each person that is here. Thank you, Lord God, we pray, God, that you may guide them in each decision that they make, and that it may be you, God, in the center. And in this moment, Lord God, we pray that you may be the center of our city, and we give you thanks, oh God, for this opportunity. We declare blessings over their family, over this place, over our city. Thank you, Jesus. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen. Thank you, everybody. God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next person was Diana Vasquez, so... Okay. Mr. Clerk, I am now submitting these names to the record. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on, we have public hearings. Document 53A17, Handicap Parking, 71 Cambridge Street, placed on the agenda by Dennis Castillo. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 53A2017, notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 20th, 2018, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following paragraph to the Handicap Parking section to be inserted, Cambridge Street, south side from a point 65 feet easterly of the intersection of South Union Street to a point, excuse me, 85 feet east of the intersection of South Union Street. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published and advertised on Thursday, February 8th.
Public hearing is now open, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Since there's no one, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document 37517, No Parking, Middlebury Street, from Haybrook Street to Magnolia Street, placed on the agenda by myself. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3752017, notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 20th, 2018, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be further amended by adding the following paragraph to the prohibited parking section for certain streets at all times to be inserted in proper order. Middlebury Street, west side from the intersection of Haybrook Street to the intersection of Magnolia Street. To the extent there exist any other ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published February 8th.
Public hearing is now open, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Since there's none, public hearing is now closed. Mr. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Document 39717, Handicap Parking, 207 Bruce Street, placed on the agenda by Councilor Reyes. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3972017, notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 20th, in Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to the city Lawrence code to be further amended by adding the following new paragraph to the Handicap Parking section of the code. Bruce Street, south side from a point 145 feet west of the intersection of Thorndegue Street to a point 165 feet west of the intersection of Thorndegue Street. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published February 8th.
Public hearing is now open, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Since there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve and waive the 30 days?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Document 40317, Handicap Parking, 20 Monthmas Street. Mr. Clerk, placed on the agenda by Councilor Reyes. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 403 of 2017, notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 20th, in Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be amended by adding the following new paragraph to the Handicap Parking section of the ordinances. Monnet Street, west side from a point 208 feet northerly of the intersection of Prague Street to a point 70, excuse me, 228 feet northerly of the intersection of Prague Street. To the extent, if there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published February 8th.
Public hearing is now open, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Since there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
And waive the 30 days?
Waive it a third day.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Moving on, communications from the mayor, city officials, and the seat attorney. We have document 6118, it's a presentation of fiscal 2017 city audit, was placed on the agenda by our Finance Director, Mr. Mark Ianello. I am going to send this document down to Budget and Finance. Appropriation orders and resolutions, appropriation. Document 7518, appropriation transfer from free cash to fund acquisition of 55 Lowell Street on the amount of $675,000 is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 3918, appropriation transfer, Office of Planning and Development, free cash to other purchases account on the amount of $45,000 is going to be... I think that's, um, is that a report? Now, we, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February 14th, the Budget and Finance Committee met by unanimous vote. It sent up to this Council a favorable recommendation, document 3918, appropriation transfer, Office of Planning and Development, from free cash to other purchases in the amount of $45,000. I place that before this Council in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, is there any discussion? I do have a question for Office of Planning and Development Director, Teresa Park. Good evening, Director.
Good evening.
So, it is my understanding, I've, I've been in conversations and in several meetings in regards to the, the improvements at the intersection of Ames and Haybrook Street. It is something that constituents have come to me multiple times. So, the, the original $45,000 is just to be able to get the project started, and we will then receive funds also from Mass Department of Public Works?
Yes. So, the $45,000 will supplement our current balance in the Other Services account, and ultimately, we're looking to have a pull of approximately $110,000 for the design and engineering costs. What that will allow us to do is then leverage approximately $1.2 million in construction costs, which would be eligible through the MPO process, which is a Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that's how we get projects funded by MassDOT.
Okay. Wonderful. No, I, I appreciate this, I, I think that it is a great need, especially in that part of the city, and residents are really looking forward to this. So, if there's no further questions, I am ready to call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Next document, document 3218, Mr. Vice Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, rather. Again, on the 14th of February, the Budget and Finance Committee met, and by unanimous vote, it once again submitted to this Council for its favorable recommendation, document number 3218, Lawrence Police Department FY18 State 911 Department Training Grant and EMD Regulatory Compliance Grant in the amount of $104,000, $104,601.56. That was placed on the agenda by Roy Vask, Chief of Police. I submit this before this Council in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Counselor Abdu, I know that in the, the report, it states to have a 30-day waiver. Are you okay with amending your motion to include the 30-day waiver?
Yes, and, um, all of the items, with one exception, at the committee level, we asked that the 30 days be waived. So, do you want me to articulate that in my motion at this level?
I second it anyway.
Please. Okay. Thank you.
So, I would amend my motion to include the waiver of the 30 days.
The 30 days, and I second the motion, yes.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Document 3318, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the 14th of February, by unanimous vote, the Budget and Finance Council recommended to this body the Lawrence Police Department item number, rather, the document item number 3318, Lawrence Police Department 2018 Massachusetts Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant in the amount of $700,000. Once again, we request that this motion also include the amendment of the 30-day waiver, and it was placed on the agenda by Roy Vask, Chief of Police.
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Document 3418, Mr. Vice Chair.
On the 14th of February, by unanimous vote, the Budget and Finance Committee submitted to this body item number 3418, Lawrence Police Department 2018 Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant in the amount of $214,700. Again, that was placed by Chief Roy Vask, and we ask, the committee recommends waiving the 30 days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is document 3518, Mr. Vice Chair.
On the 14th of February, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by unanimous vote in favor to recommend this matter to the full Council. Item number 3518, Lawrence Police Department 2017 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant in the amount of $5,386 of federal and $5,386 in state for a total dollar amount of $10,772. And we request that with a 30-day waiver, and I submit that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document 5018, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. President, 14th of February, the Budget and Finance Committee recommended by unanimous vote in favor of item number 5018, Office of Planning and Development, MassWorks Grant Authorization for the Merrimack Street West in the amount of $3 million. We did so at the request of Teresa Park, Director. Can I submit that in the form of a motion?
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? I just want to make a, an editorial comment here, I think that this will be great for the city of Lawrence, especially because of all the work that has already happened to Merrimack Street East. We've seen the development there, and I think that the continuation of this project will actually be very beneficial to the city. As you know, Merrimack Street is one of the gateways to Lawrence, and I think it will be extraordinary to be able to see some improvements over the next couple of months. So, thank you, Director Parks, for all the work that you've done. If there's no discussion or comments, I'd like to call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Document 5118, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. President, on the 14th of February, the Budget and Finance Committee recommended by unanimous vote, document number 5118, Office of Planning and Development, Green Communities Designation Grant in the amount of $594,140, placed on the agenda by Teresa Park, Director, and I place that before you in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Document 5218, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. President, on the 14th of February, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by unanimous vote in favor of document number 5218, Lawrence Fire Department School-Based Safe and Senior Safe Grant in the amount of $9,716, placed on the agenda by Chief Brian Moriarty. I place this before you in the form of a motion.
Second, what discussion?
Discussion, Counselor Reyes.
So, I just want to ask Chief Moriarty, just to kind of... Thank you, Counselor President.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can we, can you explain a little bit more about what is going to be a school, safe and senior safe?
Safe and senior safe grant allow us to go into the schools and teach the children safety, and allows us to bring the smoke trailer to the different events around the city. And then the senior safe grant allows us to go into some of the elderly housing projects and do the same thing with the senior. The two biggest at-risk populations we have are the young and the old, so these grants allow us to focus on those groups.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Abdu.
I would like to thank Chief Moriarty and reiterate something that was brought up at the subcommittee level. I, for one, can attest to the senior safer grant. Earlier, or late in 2017, I had a complex, wasn't necessarily a senior apartment complex, but it's the Diamond Springs Gardens, houses 74 people, predominantly seniors, and they had a lot of questions with respect to their safety, with respect to fire safety, how to get out, how to treat a kitchen fire, and all these good things. In communication with the chief and his staff, on a Saturday morning, they provided a team of approximately four firemen that showed up, just so happened to be all men. They showed up that Saturday morning, and I was present. They gave a great demonstration for these seniors, showed the disabled, how, where they need to go and how they need to do it, and they were assured not only of the fire department's response, but how they can act before response. And all I can say is, for this short money, 74 individuals, I, I think, left that day in a better position, and certainly felt better about their fire safety. So, I want to thank the chief and speak to the value of this particular grant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Abdu. Thank you, chief. Since there's no, Counselor De La Cruz.
Chief, I, I, I was in a place where one of your workers was doing a practice with the elderly, and they were showing them how to cover the pot when they have it on top of the stove. And it was amazing to see how many people, they were asking little question, but very important questions, and I congratulate you for that.
Thank you. They're very good, they're into, into what they do, very enthusiastic.
Good job.
Thank you.
Since there's no further questions or comments, all those in favor who approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document 5318, Mr. Vice Chair.
I did not have a medical condition, I am just trying to find 5318, and there it is. Mr. President, on the 14th of February, the Budget and Finance Committee met, and by unanimous vote, recommended item number 5318, the Lawrence Fire Department Emergency Performance Grant in the amount of $22,460, placed on the agenda by Brian F. Moriarty, Chief, Lawrence Fire Department, and I submit that to you in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document, 5818, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. This final item, on December 14th, was recommended by unanimous vote by the Budget and Finance Committee. Document number 5818, Insurance Proceeds Regarding the Rollins School Repairs in the Amount of $1,750,000, placed on our agenda by Mark Ianello, Finance Director. I submit that to you in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second, any discussion? Discussion, Counselor Abdu.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, just want to make a comment regarding what occurred at the committee level. We actually engaged Mr. Ianello with a lot of questions, not necessarily regarding anything negative, it was more so to make sure that this 1.75 in whatever... It was more so to make sure that this one point seven-five and whatever follows will make sure that the Rollins School not only is restored to a hundred percent of its financial value and make sure that it is safe, but also that it is reconstructed in the historic nature in which the building is. As we all are aware, it is a beautiful building. Anyone who's been inside knows the type of woodwork and the type of craftsmanship that went in, and we had some concerns at the, at the committee level, at least initially, that one point seven-five million dollars, yeah, sure, it's a lot of money, but that's a very large school. The destruction was on the top floor, and water damage went the entire four floors down to the basement. We were assured by Mr. Ianello that our insurance company is paying for the appropriate craftsmanship so that we are, not only will we get the school back whole and, and a safer school, but we will also get it back to the treasure, the historic treasure that it is, and that it's not just going to be a haphazard sheet rock, plywood, and cheap. It's going to be, slate roofs will be replaced with slate, woodworking will be replaced with woodworking, and so on down the line. So, one point seven-five is a number, but it does not represent the total value of the replacement of the historic Rollins School. And I, we, we were assured as a committee that Mr. Ianello will be working with the insurance company to make sure that we get our value.
Wonderful. Counselors, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Counselor De La Cruz.
A lot of people has been recommending for that school to become a museum because it's, it has a lot of value for the community. Do they have any open meetings? Were they inviting people from the community to attend, to discuss not only the expenses of the money, but the planning, the future planning for the building?
Mister President, through you. My fellow colleague has posed a question. I, I'm not certain of the process, but I know Mr. Ianello is here, and he probably is best suited to discuss the process to which the insurance money and any monies this body approves, how it will be spent, and if there is any public input in, in the public process.
Do you want to add back the question to Mr. Ianello? I'm not sure if he will have the answer for it.
Let's see if he, okay. Thank you.
The public process, I guess, is this process here. We're required, because the insurance proceeds are more than a hundred and fifty thousand, insurance proceeds of more than a hundred and fifty thousand are required to come down to the council and ask for appropriation to go into a special account to do these repairs. So what I'm doing, or what the city's asking the council to do, is approve up to, we think the value's going to be one point five million, but we ask the council to approve up to one million, seven fifty, because they haven't, the contractor and the insurer and the city haven't agreed on the numbers yet. So whatever the value of the insurance proceeds coming into the city, that we will appropriate those funds to a special account to be used solely to repair the Rollins School back to its original use.
Okay. I would like to be invited to one of those meetings because that's part of my neighborhood association, and I would like...
I don't, yeah, I'm not sure what the, the meetings would be. I would direct you to Carlos Yaquez, our GPW Director, will be in charge of the reconstruction. His staff will, will meet with the contractor, so maybe he could invite you to one of the meetings with the contractors. Your concern is what's being done at the school. But I believe it will be mainly the insurer, the city will work with the insurer to go over the, the detailed estimated amounts that the insurer would like to give us, and the city's going to have a response. We think we need a little something else for this, that, and the other thing that may not have been included in the insurer's estimate. And once they finally, the two sides finally grant, okay, here's the, we agree to, to do this, and the insurer agrees to pay for that, the project goes, gets started. They did already provide us a check for two hundred thousand to kind of get any projects started, so that's something that came in since I, I met last week with the Budget and Finance Committee. But I certainly can, can ask the GPW Director to, to include you in any meetings regarding the Rollins School, if they have. It's not any formal meetings, I'm sure it's probably construction meetings, but they can certainly, I can ask them to, to invite you.
Yeah, we would like to put some inputs in the repair of the building.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Ianello, to your knowledge, do we have a project manager for the construct, the construction?
The, well, it hasn't been decided yet, but I, usually, the streets, the building supervisor for the GPW Director, Glenn Gary, he usually oversees the construction. He's in the, he's the, he's our expert in construction on the city side. So he reviews the, the insurer's appraisal, the insurer's, I mean, work that they've authorized, and he'll review that. And I spoke to him last week, and there are some things that are not in there that he's going to request that they put in.
Thank you.
Because it's the beginning stages where, where the insurer comes up the list, and then we take a look at that list, and a few weeks later, they finally come together and agree on a number and start the construction.
Okay. Thank you. Counselors, any further questions? Counselor Abdu?
Not to belabor, I would just point out that until we're noted otherwise, this school will return once reconstructed back to being a school unless we hear otherwise from Mr. Ianello or the school department. But I think it's important to note that, that unless I learn otherwise, this, this is being reconstructed for school use. And one last note on structure, Glenn Gary, we had talked to the fire chief regarding the damage, because of varying accounts, there was a three-alarm fire, there were varying accounts, and we were concerned with what structural damage was, and he actually spoke to the integrity of this building being great in that, in the sense that it, there is not a lot of structural dam, there's not a lot of structural damage, and that Mr. Glenn Gary is making sure that what does need to be replaced is replaced one for one, and that the architectural finishings are completed. So, my understanding is, hopefully for the next school year, it would be returned to the school department for their use.
Wonderful. Any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, Housing Committee Reports. Madam Vice Chair from the Housing Committee, document forty-one eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Committee met on February the thirteenth to discuss item forty-one eighteen and for a sole plus declaration of the twelve, apton, street, unit two oh five, tax match one ninety, and lot one five, and is being sent to the full city council with a favorable recommendation, so is submitted for the full council for a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document forty-two eighteen, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. President, the Housing Committee met on February the thirteenth regarding and to discuss item forty-two eighteen, the sole plus declaration for seven shower courts, match, tax match, and one hundred and eighty-four, lot thirty-six, and is being sent to the full city council with a favorable recommendation and submitted for the city council for a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document, document forty-five eighteen, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. President, the Housing Committee met on February the thirteenth to discuss item forty-five eighteen as for a sole plus declaration of two seventy-seven, Habro Street, tax match one forty-seven, lot thirty-one, and is being sent to the full city council with a favorable recommendation and submitted to the full council for a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document forty-six eighteen, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. President, the Housing Committee met on February the thirteenth to discuss item forty-six eighteen, sole plus declaration, fifteen, Bosa Street, unit one, tax match sixty-one, lot three-one, and is being sent to the full city council with a favorable recommendation and submitted for the council for a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly, properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document forty-seven seventeen, forty-seven eighteen.
Forty-seven. Forty-seven?
Forty-seven eighteen.
Eighteen. Seventeen. Yeah, eighteen.
There's a, a human error there, yeah.
Yes. Mr. President, the Housing Committee met on February the thirteenth for item forty-seven eighteen, sole plus declaration for three eighteen, lower street, tax match one sixty-seven, lot eighty-one, and is being sent to the full city council for a favorable recommendation, and is submitted to the council with a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document, forty-eight eighteen, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. President, the Housing Committee met on February the thirteenth to discuss item forty-eight eighteen, sole plus declaration, three twenty, lowest three, tax match one six six, lot eighty-two, and is being sent to the full city council for a, with a favorable recommendation and submitted to the full council for a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
We are missing one.
Forty-nine eighteen.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. President, the Housing Committee met on February the thirteenth for the item forty-nine eighteen, sole plus declaration, twenty-five, twenty-seven, spruce tree, tax match one seventy, law one, and law nineteen, and is being sent to the full city council with a favorable recommendation and submitted for the, to the full city council with a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Counselors, I think that this is a wonderful opportunity that the city has been able to declare, to, to identify surplus properties throughout the city, and I encourage, you know, homeowners that are bought these properties and/or investors that are watching us tonight to look into each one of these properties and make a proposal to the city of Lawrence and, and invest. You know, we are definitely open for business and willing to support initiatives, whether you're a small or a big entity, please look into this particular addresses, and, and I know that our asset officer, Licensing Ange, will gladly assist you in the process. Thank you. If there's no questions or any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, very much, Madam Vice Chair. Next, it's the Personnel Committee Reports. Mr. Chair from the Personnel Committee, fifty-five eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February twelfth, the Personnel Committee met to consider item number fifty-eight eighteen, and unlike Budget and Finance, where I get to ramble through ten of them, this was the first of two personnel actions we got to deliberate, and this is, is an appointment to the Cultural Council, which I would note that we had a very good conversation with the candidate. She has given over two decades to the city of Lawrence and, and the Education Department, and she's also committed to her community, and that shows in her application and in her comments. So, we went on to ask her questions as we do all candidates, and this is just an extension of her service to the city in employment and community service, and now she wants to give on the Cultural Council. So with that, on the twelfth of February, the Personnel Committee voted by unanimous vote to recommend to this full council, item number fifty-five eighteen, the appointment of Kathleen V. Di Filippo to the Cultural Council, placed on our agenda by Mayor Dan Rivera, and I place that before you in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second. Any discussion? Counselor Payano.
Thank you, Counsel President. So, I mean, so we have Kath, Ms. Di Filippo here today, and I think, you know, anytime that we're appointing anyone in the full council, I think it's opportune time to sort of ask questions. I know that the Personnel Committee did meet and asked, you know, plenty of questions to the individual, but I think, you know, due diligence, just to have the individual come here and say hello and say why they're interested in this position would be a good idea.
Good evening, Ms. Filippo.
Kathleen D. Filippo, I live at Three Halsey Street, and I was here last week, as Counselor Abdu said before the Personnel Committee, and several questions were asked, but maybe like you, you want to serve the city. For me, there's, I think the opportunity to be part of the Cultural Committee is something very positive. It will affect probably everyone in the city, from youth through elderly people, just looking at some of the grants requests that have come in. I think it's, I think it's important to, to share those opportunities with people throughout the district, out the city, and, you know, I, like Counselor Abdu said, I, I am retired, other than being an Uber driver for my grandchildren, four or five days a week. I do have some time, and I think part of the motivation was the national election a year ago, and Hillary Clinton said to get involved some way, and I think this is the way I can do it.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Counselor Payano, you have any further questions?
No, but I, I want to say thank you for your willingness to participate, and I wish to look in the process, and I know that you will be great in this position. You have a, a good individual as your chair, so I know...
I certainly do.
...on success. Thank you.
Thank you for your confidence.
Counselor De La Cruz.
I would like to say thank you for dedicating time to the community, and it's a long process. You will have to do a lot of readings and a lot of, it's a lot of work. It's not an easy job, but we would, we'd like to say thank you because when people give back to the community, you know, we had to congratulate you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank all of you.
Thank you. Counselors, any further questions?
Oh, you just have to approve me one more time, right? Okay. I'll wait. Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Ms. Filippo.
Kathleen.
And thank you for your service. Next document is document fifty-six eighteen, Mr. Chair from Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I move on to fifty-six eighteen, I'll take a moment of personal privilege to recognize school committee person, my school committee person, Pat Mariano, that is here this evening that, bit of a bridge, she, she comes as an unofficial sponsor of our last candidate, and she is also the district e-school committee woman, and we, our next candidate is, she doesn't represent any district, she represents us all, but she is on the Great Lawrence School District, and I just wanted to recognize Ms. Mariano this evening, she's here with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the twelfth of February, the Personnel Committee met to deliberate item number fifty-six eighteen and voted by unanimous vote in favor of item fifty-six eighteen, the appointment to the Oliver School Building Committee, Ms. Stephanie Infante, and it was placed on the agenda by Mayor Dan Rivera. I place it in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Discussion, Counselor Abdu as President of the motion, and Counselor Payano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Most of us got to meet Ms. Infante informally last year when we were all running for reelection or election. Ms. Infante, as you know by now, is one of our three members to the Great Lawrence School District. As her counselor, as her district counselor, I can speak with enthusiasm of this young woman's commitment to our city, her own personal education and interest, which is embodied in the fact that here she is, giving nights and weekends like you all do for the Great Lawrence School District, but yet she makes herself available for Lawrence Public Schools. So this is just, I think, indicative of the type of person that she is at such a young age, and we did not expect her this evening, but I can't see that she has joined us, and therefore, for those of you not on the Personnel Committee, she is available for your questions. And I would just like to conclude my comments by saying I look forward to enthusiastically voting for her this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Payano.
Thank you, Counsel President. Yes, I would like Ms. Infante to... Yes, I would like Ms. Infante to speak to us about her intentions, why she's interested in serving in this board.
Stephanie Infante, to twenty-sixth Mall Vernon Street. Good evening, Council. I first want to thank you for the opportunity to even, you know, to discuss my, my opportunity to be a volunteer. I was very fortunate enough to attend a elementary school, middle school, that was well-equipped, and now as a city-elected official, I have the opportunity to positively impact the educational environment of our students, and I truly believe it is a key, a key aspect of their overall educational success. So I believe I can definitely help and bring something to the table to ensure that our students are getting what they deserve. As far as from my experience, I served as a student trustee on the Fitchbrook State Board of Trustees, and throughout my service, we did have to approve construction, renovation, and acquisitions for the university, and as a, as a voting member, I definitely had to pay attention to what the school was doing and their intentions for the student body.
Counselors, any further questions or comments?
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz.
Stephanie, I remember when I was in one of the board at the old Lawrence High School, and they, I spoke about children, lefty children, having tables where they were unable to write. Then, a lot of people laughed about it, but, you know, it was a woke point, because I went back to see the new high school, and they didn't have those old chairs where the children, the lefty kids wasn't able to write. Then, as a young lady, we would like to say thank you, because we know that you are a very busy person, and that you're taking part of your time to donate to the city of Lawrence. I really appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Infante, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, Public Safety Committee reports, there's none. Committee of the whole reports, there's none. Withdrawals. Counselor, can I please get a motion to withdraw Document fifty-three eighteen, surplus decoration Millville Avenue, tax map one eighty-eight, lot fifty-five, eighty-five A.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document forty-four eighteen, surplus decoration six seventeen Common Street. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Old Business, we have Document one twenty-five seventeen, which is establishing the maximum motor vehicle speed citywide to twenty-five miles per hour. It's a request to amend Chapter ten twenty-six. It was based on the agenda by myself and Counselor Rodriguez.
Second.
Mr. Clerk.
The city attorney noted that the, the committee report itself miscited the actual ordinance. I think it cites at two point two oh on the committee report, two point two six, excuse me, and asked that I place it on the agenda to formally amend that record, and the reasoning being that this ordinance, more than most, will probably generate more citations, and any error to the record through its approval process may be attacked and criticized on a legal basis, negating possible citations down the road, no pun intended. And that's the reason it's before the council, essentially to correct the record, to correctly reference the ordinance to be amended as city ordinance section one zero point two six.
Counselors, are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Counselor De La Cruz.
This is, thank you, President. Is this the, the changes that we wanted to do to the speed in the whole city of Lawrence?
That's correct.
Okay. I consider that this is very important for our community. It was an accident today on Common Street and Sperry Street, on the bus location. People are running in this city. It doesn't matter if it is one block or two blocks. I think that changing the law to a twenty percent speed, I think is going to solve a lot of the safety issues that we have in the community. Thank you.
Counselor Payano.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just a question, so it sounds like this is being brought up as a procedural, just to make an amendment on the motion necessarily that we're going to be discussing it today, because I know that the committee asked for certain reports, and I wasn't sure if that those were done yet.
No. Yes, I know.
Yes.
It's, it's, so this document has previously been approved, ordered to a public hearing, but with the wrong chapter.
Okay.
So if you, when we review the documentation, we have documents that are presented as ten twenty, ten point twenty-six and twenty point twenty-six. So when we order the public hearing, so we already voted to move on, and we voted to move on on twenty point twenty-six, which is not the correct chapter within the, the city charter, or the code of ordinance, I'm sorry. And what we're doing today is retaking our vote, the vote that we already approved, for the public hearing.
Got it.
So tonight, our action will not be definitive on the twenty-five miles per hour, but rather to ensure that when we have the publication, it is proper.
And if I may, Council President, to add to that, I would suggest that the council add to the motion that it amends the committee report to accurately reflect the ordinance that is being amended as well.
I think that sounds, is there a motion for that?
Second.
So moved.
So moved.
So motion by Counselor De La Cruz.
Second.
Second by Counselor Reyes. Okay? Are there any further questions or comments? Is everybody understanding tonight? So tonight, we're not approving this. We're just reordering the public hearing with the proper chapter number.
Yes.
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Table matters. Counselors, are there any table matters that you wish to take off the table at this point?
President, what was the question? I'm sorry.
Are there any table matters that you wish to take off the table at this point? Okay, moving on. New Business, Document sixty-two eighteen, is the Immigrant City Archives, request to use of Canal Street and Union Street for the fifth annual Lawrence History Center North Canal five K run, race, and walk on Sunday, May twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, from eight thirty a.m. to eleven a.m. It's going to the Ordinance Committee. Document sixty-three eighteen, Iglesia de Cristos Ríos de Agua Viva, requests to use various parks to preach the gospel during two thousand and eighteen, May eighteenth and nineteenth, the Cronin Park on Juniper Street, June fifteenth and sixteenth, Plains Mans Park on Elm Street, July thirteenth and fourteenth, Campanon Common, August third and fourth, Roval Park on Auburn Street, September seventh and eighth, Reviviendo Park on Newberry Street, from five to eight p.m. at all locations, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document sixty-four eighteen, Asociación Ministerial Evangelica del área de Lawrence, requests to use the Campanon Common for their Running in the Valley event, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, from six to eight, to nine p.m., and August twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, from three to six p.m. It's going to the Ordinance Committee. Document sixty-five eighteen, House of Worship, Esplendor of Zion, requests to use the Campanon Common for their Adoración Extrema, September eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Document sixty, sixty-six eighteen, cost of vehicles towed and stored outside the city is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document sixty-seven seventeen, Lawrence Break Park, dedication to Representative Kevin Blanchett is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document sixty-eight eighteen, Willowby Street, one-way, going to the Ordinance Committee. Lake sixty-nine eighteen, Lake Street, one-way, going to the Ordinance Committee. Document seventy eighteen, financial review for quarter ending December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, is going to Budget and Finance. Document seventy-one eighteen, businesses to remain open, no later than ten p.m. It's going to the Ordinance Committee. Document seventy-two eighteen, Jamaican South Union Street, zoning decision review to the Ordinance Committee. Ordinance Committee, yeah. Document seventy-three eighteen, transient vendor license, forty-eight Brook Street, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document seventy-four eighteen, Millville Avenue, approved, to be approved as a public way, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document seventy-six eighteen, acceptance of D. from City Casters and Co. is three forty-seven South Broadway, is going to the Housing Committee. Mr. Chair from the Personnel Committee, when is your next meeting?
Mr. President, there are no personnel items at this time, therefore, there is no scheduled meeting.
Okay. Madam Vice Chair from the Housing Committee, when will be the next meeting? Next? On Tuesdays? Is that when you're meeting?
Yes.
Monday?
The next.
Tuesdays?
Yeah.
So Tuesday, the twenty-seventh?
That was the twenty-seventh, yes.
Yeah, Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. So two. Okay, Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
March first.
March first. Mr. Vice Chair from Budget and Finance.
Wednesday evening, the twenty-eighth of February, seven p.m. Right here in the City Council Chambers.
Okay. Mr. Chair from Public Safety.
We have a meeting on the twelfth of February.
Okay.
No.
I'm sorry, March.
March.
He is still on February fourteenth, but he was.
Okay. Counselors, before we adjourn, we all received a flyer for the Easter Bunny Breakfast, All You Can Eat Pancakes, so if you are able to, please make sure you go there. This is sponsored by Lawrence Methuen Community Coalition, the Lawrence Senior Center, and the different Lawrence Neighborhood Associations, and LMAP, South Lawrence West, Tower Hill, Mount Vernon, Colonial Heights, District A, and South Common Central. Please make sure that you come out, if you are able to. I understand we all have busy schedules, but this is in an effort to support the National Night Out activities, which will be coming very soon, it feels like today.
Can I say something?
Is there, I'm sorry?
Can I say something about the breakfast?
Counselor De La Cruz.
Last year, we were able to buy a basketball net for the Lutheran Church due to the money that was raised with the Bunny Breakfast and the National Night Out. Then we invited everybody to continue helping out. It's going to be eight dollars for adults and five dollars for children, and children under ten, they're going to be five dollars.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Counselor Levy.
We have a celebration of the, for February the twenty-seventh, it's the Independence Day for the Dominican Republic, and it's going to be here from five to seven, or seven thirty p.m. this coming Tuesday, here at the City Hall.
Thank you. Okay, Counselors, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.